This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good evening. I'll now call the February 7, 2021 regular virtual meeting of the Economic Development Commission to order at 6:32. My name is Joe Mira, Chair of the EDC, and I will now give a brief introduction to those who are new to the go-to-meeting format, members of the public. If you are joining the meeting by computer, tablet, smartphone, please enter your name below your camera image. Also, please keep your camera inactive and your microphone muted during the meeting, unless you're called to speak. Since the system does not do well with multiple speakers and the audio from only one person will be recorded, only one speaker will be recognized at a time. If people do not participate respectfully, I will be forced to use the "Mute All" button so that the person who has the floor can be heard. If you are participating by computer, tablet, smartphone, and want to ask a question or make a comment, please indicate this by typing into the chat bar. When you are called on, please unmute your microphone, activate your camera, introduce yourself, state your name, address, ask your question, or make your comment. If you are participating by telephone, please introduce yourself, name, address, ask your question, or make your comment. Anyone who refuses to give their name and address, or if someone is not respectful to this commission, will be disconnected and blocked from this meeting. We'll now begin the meeting. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic which is the nation under God, with all liberty and justice. Thank you. Okay. We're going to open with the minutes. Does anybody have anything to mention about the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as drafted.
Very good. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? No, it's all unanimous. Okay, thank you. Any of you on the expenses, any comments? Bearing none, I'm going to move on to the committee's marketing. That would be Patricia. You're on mute right now.
Hi, everyone. We have still been working with Quinnipiac students. They gave us ideas for the website and changes for the website, and I believe there's a link to the website. It was sent to you via email. The kids are doing an amazing job, an absolutely amazing job. We really are getting more than our money's worth out of this entire situation. It is a complete marketing package. It's not just making the website look nice. It's how to get people to go to the website. It's just they've done a great job, a full job, even how it's listed, even keywords in order to drive you to the site that are associated with the site. A lot of the backend is what I'm talking about that they've done to prepare us to be noticed and to have people come and see us. Rob, would you like to say something?
Yeah, just real briefly for the rest of the committee. I think when you start to look at the website and some of the other social media platforms that they're developing for us, you're going to see the end result, what you're not going to see, and I think at some point in time, hopefully, we can fill you in a little bit more on the process that it took to get there. There have been hundreds and hundreds of pages of studies, phone calls, hundreds of hours put into this to understand exactly what type of words, what size lettering, what type of market, what type of social media platforms. So just tremendous amount of effort. Tim is instrumental in working directly with them, so kudos to him as well. And it's just an amazing process, and it still has a long ways to go, but it's far exceeded any of the expectations that any of us had. So yeah, looking forward to seeing the continued results in that.
All for me.
Okay, thank you. Patricia, anything else?
Tim, would you like to comment on the marketing?
Yeah, I'll just add that, for those of you who are not aware, our LinkedIn page, Wallingford EDC, is now live. So please go and connect with us on the LinkedIn page. We've sent out one message. And then what we're doing is we've got a fellow named Jack Hadam, who are one of the students. He's our audience development guy on that team. So he is now, thanks to Anthony, we have subscribed to a thing. It's a sales management tool through LinkedIn. So Jack is going to be, he's actively doing it now because scouring. You've heard me speak of S-I-O-R. That's a Society of International Office Realtors. You've heard me talk about K-I-M. It's another commercial real estate group. So we've identified New England, New York, New Jersey, and Pennsylvania as our target geographies, and he is building a database with all those folks. And through this LinkedIn tool, that again, Anthony was very instrumental in helping us identify and work through. It's something he uses all the time in his full-time job. So we've launched our first message with really not a lot of people out there. We want to make sure it works, and now we're starting to build audience. So I'd encourage you, if you're inclined to be on LinkedIn at all, to jump in, tag our page, and you'll start sending more messages. So that is up and running. Our email marketing campaign is also up and running. It was one email sent out to a lot of our businesses in town last week. We've got another one that we wanted to send out before the week is over. Lynn has walked, one of the student team members, through using our MailChimp technologies so that we can send stuff out through our email marketing. Our next big initiative there is just to build a much deeper database with email. And then our webpage design should be finished. I'd say go live if not the end of this week, but next week. So stay tuned for that. And then lastly, our college outreach component, our college outreach channel, is up and running. And we'll have our second message going out to our businesses tomorrow, and that's a young lady named Brenna Rose, who's one of the students, who has contacted universities. Oh, I don't know, there's a half a dozen of them in the region, and she's made contacts through telephone calls and emails with the placement offices at all the universities. So now we have an in at the placement office, and we can connect all of our businesses to the placement professionals at the universities. Most of all of them are using a technology tool to take in post jobs and connect job seekers with employers. So that is up and running. So the only two that are not up and running of the channel, so again, right now LinkedIn is live, email marketing is active, college outreach is active. The webpage should be finished by the end of the week. Facebook, I put the brakes on that because we have to iron out a couple of things. So we were ready for a message, and then I slammed the brakes on. And Instagram, frankly, we really haven't gotten deep into Instagram yet, only because we've got so many balls in here. I asked the students for a reprieve on that. So anyway, I'm very, very pleased, and again, kudos to the marketing committee, Rob, Patricia, Mark. It's been a lot of work, and I think we're up and running on some fronts, and stay tuned and follow us on all these social media links. And the other big thing is ideas, ideas for messages. You know, if there's something we should be talking about, we've got some messages in the queue to talk about our electric rates, et cetera. But anyway, if you have any ideas that you want to take and you think we should be touting, let us know. That's my opinion.
Okay, Gary?
Hi, Gary. Yeah, no, I was just going to say I was on the LinkedIn page. I started following it already. It's nicely done. And the other thing I was going to say, that just as a reminder, I got onto the website with the, you know, going back and forth between the LinkedIn page and the website. And if you're putting a new website up, which we're doing in our company, certainly linking to the videos that were done on the EDC website. They're such a first-class job with the drone videos. Encourage people to link that into their personal websites of their businesses to show about where you're located in the town. It's quite impressive.
Very good. Yeah, thank you. Okay, Patricia, did you have anything else to add?
My husband wishes he had this button where I'd stop talking. We also mentioned the forum, the Wallingford Forum. Remember, we were going to start placing things on there without receiving any information. We discussed that, right, Tim, getting on the Wallingford Forum?
Yeah, so what's happened, Patricia, is, and I'll share with the commission, you know, we wanted our Facebook page to be a one-way communication tool. We post, but we don't necessarily allow for the feedback because, you know, there's a concern that people will use it inappropriately and start chiding on whatever. It's just a conversation that can go awry so fast. And I was led to believe that that was doable. Brenna actually reached out to me this morning and said that she does not believe it is doable, that you have to accept comments even on a business Facebook page. So we actually set up a meeting for tomorrow morning with her, Professor Tomczyk, because, you know, at this stage of the game, you know, we've built this on the premise, you know, based on research that said we could restrict comment, and now I'm being told that we can't. So I just said, okay, time to stop, regroup. So if anybody here knows any different, let me know, because I don't, but we're going to talk about it tomorrow. So all of the forums that she had taken and was prepared to launch us onto, I kind of put the brakes on. You know, we deal with a number of controversial issues. These parking lots that are, you know, whether it be the one down by the old brothers lot or the one behind Simpson Court or Wallace Avenue, to us as economic developers, you know, we see these things as very clear, but we know in every case they have become controversial. We see expanding uses in the IX zone and the I-5 zone as an opportunity. Other people see it extremely, you know, some people are very critical about it. So if we start launching a Facebook page, my fear is that people will take what our message is, they will deviate from the message and use it as a forum to start, you know, just chiding on things. And not that that's a bad thing necessarily, but we're just not equipped to be responsive on those things, and I just don't want the conversation to run away.
Tim, if I can interrupt you. The fact is that this meeting is open every month to the public, and this would be the forum for any feedback, and there is no need to open another channel. I agree with you. So if people have a comment or criticism or any remarks on what EDC is involved in, we welcome their input at these meetings. I'm sorry, Tim.
No, I was done anyway, Joe. So that's Patricia and Rob. You weren't aware that I had put the brakes on Facebook because I just did it this morning, so, but stay tuned.
Thank you. Patricia, I guess you're done?
I am done. Thank you for doing that, Tim. That was very smart of you. Things can get very nasty going back and forth, so it is good that you put the brakes on. And I am all done.
Thank you. And as I said, we welcome the input, but there's a place, time and place, as the saying goes, and this is the place and this is the time. We just don't have the manpower to keep up with other avenues. I want to thank the marketing committee. I think you're doing a terrific job. I'm really excited to see this thing kind of fruition. I mean, it's, first of all, I think you're light years ahead of where I figured you to be by this time. So again, kudos on the job you're doing. Planning and zoning. Jim, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, I'd like to start off just by thanking the members that attended the town council meeting, the last town council meeting. It was, as you know, Joe, was a long drag, and we were there and we hung in, and, you know, it appears that it went fine, and it appears that it'll be helpful to the merchants. You know, I guess the stipulation is whether or not the lease is signed. So I just, again, I wanted to say thank you to those members that were there. I think it's helpful that we show up and voice our opinion. Tim, do you have anything you want to add to that, or?
Before we go to Tim, Hank, if you'd want to kind of make a comment? Hank?
Sure. Thanks, Joe. Other than to, for those who may not know that they ultimately did pass the lease at Simpson Court and the parking, to get the parking done, and also at the two parking lots back in Wallace there. So it was a lot of back and forth, for sure, but eventually it did pass.
Thank you. All right, Tim, did you want to add anything, please?
Nope, nothing. I'll just cover a couple of things in my report, but I think they covered it fine.
Yeah, I think the meeting was a lot longer than it probably should have been, but everyone had their points of view aired, and it was approved, and I think it's going to be a real benefit to the community at large, both to the downtown and the overall community. As we've said before, people visiting from either businesses or from Choate. And I'm not talking about Choate, trying to impress Choate. What I'm referring to when I mentioned Choate is that you never know the opportunities that are lost. I mean, I know it's maybe fantasy world, but you may get an executive from another company visiting a student in Choate and taking a look at the town and say, you know what? This is a place we want to be, or this is a place I want to have a branch office, or this is a place. Whatever their reason is, I'd like him to walk away saying, this is a place. And I think that park lot will add to the value of our town and to the perception of the visitors. So I think it's a win all the way around, and I think it's a big thank you to all the committee, to staff, for all the work, Tim, for all the work he's done in laying the groundwork for this, the staff, the commissioners by showing up at the meetings. And we also had a downtown group that put together a great presentation on the WCI and the downtown organization, did a fantastic job. So I think it all went well. All the hard work paid off, and we just got to see the project completed. We'll follow up on it. Again, thank you. Retention. Rosemary, I'm sorry. Yes?
Before we, man, can I just add one anecdote?
Please.
You talk about, you know, people from out of town. So some of you may have seen an article in the Hartford Business Journal that talked about a West Coast investor buying a relatively large piece of industrial property in Wallingford. And this fellow bought 135 North Plains Industrial Road. And the reason he came to Wallingford is because he's got a youngster at Choate. And he came to town, and the youngster started school at Choate. He's been back and forth. He's taken a liking to the town, and it took him a couple of months, but he bought his first piece of investment property. This guy's apparently very well-heeled and owns a lot of West Coast properties, but he bought 135 North Plains Industrial Road, and he's got his sights on a couple of others. So to Joe's point, you never know who's looking. So you always want to look right. You always want to look good. So perfect example.
Thank you, Tim. And this wasn't rehearsed for everybody's interpretation. And Kathy, Lily, I see you're on the screen there. Again, I want to thank WCI for all the hard work they did for putting that presentation together. You did a fantastic job.
Thanks, Joe. It was a team effort.
Good. It'll work. Retention. Gary, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. I didn't see Rose, but we recently had our meeting last week for retentions and incentives. And just to add to the comments with regard to the marketing program, one of the comments we made during the course of the meeting was the good spinoffs that will come from this program. We in retentions and incentives are going to be, you know, sitting back with a complete review of the marketing program and see what data comes out of there that we could use in promoting more programs. The other thing, we went through the previous minutes that were approved and everything, but we talked about the business, the business properties that were, Tim did, and staff did a review on the business properties that were uptown. We wanted to know, we wanted to get an update as to where those programs were. There were a couple of properties that were supposed to be expanded or looking to expand. Tim did a review with them. One of them, as you face the post office, is the building to the right of the post office. That's still going forward. You know, obviously, they're going to be waiting until the springtime. And I guess the other property over near the former police department, where the, one of the buildings that was going to be taken down near the package store behind it, that's still going forward. So it's good to see that they're not sitting back, waiting for something else to happen, and those programs are moving forward. I wish our incentive programs brought those forward, but they didn't, but that's okay. It's still good when things happen without the incentive programs. We also looked at, Tim did a review of the business relief programs that are available to the state. I was enlightened on a couple of them. I was really kind of amazed where some of these programs are almost automatic. I know Tim could probably speak to them a little bit, but the ability to get funding out to well-needed business owners who are suffering because of the pandemic, some checks are going out automatically based on, you know, losses and look back at previous year and where they are and how they reported. So that was interesting to see. Quite frankly, it was a nice relief to see there was a proactive move on some of those things. Other than that, we did go through, well, we didn't talk about it in this meeting, but at this point, we're pretty curtailed on doing the exit interview programs based on the electrical hookups. That we didn't see much coming out of that this time, but we'll probably bring that back up when things get back to whatever normal is. And our next meeting is scheduled for February the 25th at 9:00 a.m., and everybody's invited to come listen to us. That's about it. Any comments?
Thank you, Gary. I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions for Gary? Make them hard. No?
Go ahead, try it. Is this a Jeopardy round?
There you go. Okay, thank you. Chairman's report. I'm going to just give a quick update, and it seems like it's turning into the HUBCAP report, but since EDC is involved in it, I think it's important to keep everybody current. We're talking about, and hopefully we'll know within the next couple of weeks, a limited opening, reopening of HUBCAP. I would like to have a full-blown opening, but you can't always get what you'd like. But we're also starting up some of the pipelines. What we're looking at right now is the exploratory pipeline. That's the one where we bring people in. It's really going to be useful, I think, for a lot of reasons, for the community and especially the high school students, seniors who are graduating and are not pursuing higher education and really not sure what direction they want to go. We're going to have speakers, programs from four or five occupations, services, hospitality, medical, of course, manufacturing, and service. I may have said that already. So we hope to have that sometime in March kicked off. I'm trying to, well, I've been talking to my, we had started a small business council prior to the pandemic, and I'm just trying to reach out to all of them. I started today, trying to re-rise that because I think the time now for a small business council is really more important probably than it was in March because a lot of people are looking like that as an alternative. And it would be nice to put something like that together. And one of my pet projects, and I'm going to look for funding, so if anybody has any resources or would like to donate, I need money to run newspaper ads because I want to run a program for the businesses that are out of business. Yes, I want to help the businesses that are in business. I want to help the small business, but we also can't ignore the fact that we had businesses where people have put their heart and soul into their business for 10, 15, 20 years, and through no fault of their own, had to close it. And most of them don't realize the transferable skills that they have to re-enter the workplace, and I'd like to put a program together for that. My problem with that is it's not hard putting the program together. What's hard is how do I find these people? And the only option I had, and if someone has better, please let me know, is to run a few newspaper ads, letting them know what's available. So anyway, that's what we're up to, and I take any suggestions, any inputs, with a grain of stone, I really would like any suggestions or inputs, whether it's today, tomorrow, or the next day. Please don't hesitate to reach out. Or if you have a pipeline or a training program that you think is important for the community, would be happy to take a look at it. With that, I can turn it over to Tim if there's no questions. Tim, you're on.
Okay, very good, Joe. Thanks. Several other things on my report. I'm assuming everybody has it. We've discussed already a couple of things I'll touch on. Some good news items, the Proton Beam Therapy Center has been, went through the wetlands approval process successfully and planning and zoning successfully. So now they're just still waiting for the certificate of need from the state of Connecticut. They expect to have that anytime now, and that is the last green light they need to take and get things going. So this, again, $72 million project, it is the biggest project that we have active right now in town, and I'm very confident that it's going to happen. So it's all good. I also wanted just to mention that I think most are aware, certainly those on the Planning and Zoning Liaison Committee are aware, that the discussion about expanding uses in the I-5 district, as well as reducing the open space requirements in the I-5 and I-X zones, that's been put on hold. There was a public hearing in December, Planning and Zoning Commission, and then in January, the mayor, myself, or Economic Development, the mayor's office, law, and the town planner, all asked the commission to take and close the public hearing and allow us to have more internal conversations about potential, potentially expanding development and the open space. So stay tuned. That's still a work in progress. I thought you'd be interested. There's probably no question I get asked more often than is, what's going on on the Bristol Myers site? Is Amazon going to go there? So we know that Amazon does have a sales contract on that site. We also know that they went in front of wetlands in November. They opted not to go back in December. They opted not to go back in January, and at this point, as of Friday, they were not on the agenda for this month. Lynn, did you see the wetlands agenda today by chance? You're on mute.
Yes. Wednesday's agenda is on the website. I don't think that project is on there. I'm pretty sure it's not.
Erin said on Friday it wasn't. She didn't expect it to be. So it just raises some So, so it just raises a little, some question marks as to the status. And we, I guess we'll just kind of wait that one out. I just wanted to mention also that, you know, the project about the CT rail and the train horn noises, our Corporation Council, Janice Small, has been just a champion in trying to make sure that we, we, you know, determine whether those train horns are above the decibel levels that are within, you know, the perimeters set by the, by the railroad. We did get a preliminary report from the railroad saying that, given their testing, those horns were louder or outside of the acceptable decibel range. So I guess that's good news in that, you know, we've been screaming, saying the blessed horns are too loud. And they're, so they tested them, I give them credit, they've been very cooperative. And they're saying, you know, you guys are right, they're, they're, they're too loud. So that's being addressed. Also, we're trying to get the Quinopeiac and Hall Avenue at-grade crossings to be treated as one crossing. So that would cut, you know, five horn blows out of the, every single time a train passes, so. And then we're also, they're also looking to potentially put the way-sounding horns. If you go over by CVS Drugstore on Route 5, you go over that crossing, you'll actually see a horn on a, you know, on a post. And when the train is approaching that at-grade crossing, it does not blow the whistle from the engine. That whistle that's on, on that post blows. It's, it's tripped by a trigger in the, in the tracks. And that's, that's called a way-sounding horn. And the sound is not projected outwards, but it is aimed down. So it's not nearly as, as egregious as the horns coming from the engine. So without getting into too much of the detail, you know, there's, there's a lot of activity and energy and cooperation by the railway. So nothing happens without their cooperation. So know that that is something that we're still actively working on. As far as the, the report on our town center, I know Kathy's on the call, but I will report what she has given, you won't see it in my report because we just didn't, I didn't get it in on time. But Kathy reports that on the corner of North Orchard Street and Center Street, where, oh gosh, Design, Design Interiors 2 or something was there before, DH2, I think it was, that's gonna be a small grocery store. So Kathy's still waiting, you know, for some details on that, but that's supposed to be opening sometime in March, so stay tuned. Jake's on Center Street, has closed. The building was purchased by a gentleman named Michael Gould. He operates Michael's Deli and Catering in Cheshire. And he's opening a chop house with an Italian flair, according to Kathy. And they plan an opening in March. So we'll see a couple of new Center Street tenants there.
Excuse me, Tim?
Yep.
Actually, the building was not sold, just the business was sold. And the building is still on the market. So he just purchased the restaurant portion.
Very good, thanks for clarifying that, Kathy. All right, and then WCI is hosting some free social media classes for downtown businesses, which, you know, a meeting that I attended along with Mark Jingeris a month or so ago. The best way to help the businesses is to help them do business in this new environment. So I give Kathy all the credit for, you know, taking and saying, let's educate the people that are not real familiar with how to do business, you know, or use social, social media to grow their business. Let's teach them how to do it. So she's, she's all over that. And then WCI also has three Valentine Day promotions that they're working on to drive business to some of our downtown businesses. So lots going on and Kathy is, in my opinion, all over, all over doing a great job. And Joe, unless there's any other questions, that's, that kind of concludes my report for this evening.
I don't see any questions. Anything for the, any other community business?
Yes.
I can let you get back out and shovel. I'm sorry.
I've had enough for today. Tomorrow's another day. But anyway, community business. I can tell you personally that over the last 30 some-odd years, that this commission has changed drastically. We are involved in the community way beyond economic development. And I would like to throw it out to all the members, just something to think about. We are known as the Economic Development Commission. And I really think at this point, and with everything we've done and touched on, we should change our name to the Economic, Economic and Community Development. It really, I think it's a softer touch. I think people look at us a little bit like, all we want to do is create tax revenue. And we go way beyond that. All the work that's done, half of what was mentioned tonight was community development. And, you know, from Tim, from WCI, from Joe, everybody, everybody has touched on it. This commission, believe me, in 30 years, has really changed. And I think we should, you know, just think about it. It's something I want on the table. And I think we should be the Economic Development, Economic Community Development because we are developing the community as well as the economics. Just a thought.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, anything else?
Joe, I will add, Joe, I neglected to say that we are actively interviewing, the we being the mayor, myself, and the mayor's administrative assistant, but we're actively interviewing candidates for Lynn's position. So stay tuned.
Thank you.
The other guy I was gonna add, Joe, maybe we can, maybe we can make the, when we do get the horns fixed, we can call it the Jim Wolfe Horn Blowing Action Plan.
There you go.
Okay, reluctantly, I will take a motion to adjourn. If someone has the, do you say something, Rob?
I was just seconding your motion, but somebody else.
I'll make a motion.
All right, so Pat made it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Have a good night. Take it easy with that snow, don't, don't overexert yourself.
Lynn's waving, Lynn's waving, what's up, Lynn?
Lynn, I'm sorry.
Who was the second for the adjournment?
Rob. I did.
She was the first and the second, yeah.
Actually, it was Don Rowe.
Oh, holy Christ. Mr. Rowe, how, how are you?
I'm very well. It was so nice tuning in and seeing you all.
Hey, Don.
Although I don't envy your condition with your, what do they call that, a nor'easter, huh?
There's a scary guy from the past.
Yeah.
Stop recording, baby.
Yes, stop recording.
Yeah.
Please stop recording now.